Hello, everyone. We're gonna wait a few more minutes to allow everybody to join us. Hello, everyone. Thanks for joining us. I've pasted the meeting notes into the chat and I'm gonna do so again. Please go ahead and add yourself to the attendees listing. And then I need at least one scribe for today. All right. Hello, everyone. Just a reminder that this meeting is being livestreamed to YouTube. Your participation in these meetings is an agreement to abide by the Cloud Native Security Code of Conduct, which can be found within the repository. We've had two folks volunteer to be scribes for today to ensure all actions and primary content discussed is recorded in the written notes and can be referred to later. For existing members and working group representatives, please remember to include your organization and company along with the working group you're involved with and a corresponding update. So first off, it's been a long time. So you had one of these meetings and a lot of stuff has happened. I hope everybody had a opportunity to enjoy their holiday break and get some relaxation in and rejuvenation and are ready to hit the ground running this year. Do we have any new members that would like to introduce themselves? All right, no new members. I'm not gonna go through and triage the current issues because I have been out for a very long time. I do know that we don't have another timezone currently unless that changed. Has anybody tell me if I am wrong? Can I go with that's a no? Anybody have any notes from any of the recent talk meetings? I know that the last one was canceled. And the next one, I think, is like January 18th. Okay, this is gonna be a really fast meeting. All right. Project updates. Is there anybody here from the audio project? Okay, how about supply chain?
Michael and I.
Yep. Yeah, I can give at least a quick thing. So still waiting on the internal technical writers to do some cleanup and generate, you know, a PDF draft or for the document. I believe that there was some miscommunication at some point where but also I believe with the holidays and everything else, it looks like it's sort of sitting there. So I did message them again yesterday in the JIRA ticket to ask about what the status is of it. I do hope it goes out sooner rather than later. If it's gonna take a while, we might want to think about a different approach to sort of releasing this for feedback. Because I know we want to get it sooner rather than later so that we're ready by CubeCon Valencia.
Currently, we have no ETA or indication that they've actually have started working on it. And a lot of the thinking why we had submitted it to them before opening to feedback was we know the production and publishing process takes place. So get that started. And once we'd have like a cleaned up PDF, we could circulate that. It'd be really easy. Having like the production template and all just to make updates. But yeah, probably a good idea if we can like circulate the artifact that we have. We don't expect it to change other than like cleanup and word smithing perhaps. So yeah. Expect like document to be circulated and start gathering feedback. So we can parallelize both.
Okay, and that that'll be a call for public comments that'll go out through lists in the security channel and Twitter. Is that correct?
Those are the avenues. We don't have other channels.
Okay, when can we expect to see that happen? Sometime in the next two weeks?
Andres, I mean, I'm ready whenever. I think it's ready whenever folks are ready, but I'm not sure what the normal CNCF processes are around this.
Well, I would argue that nothing is normal around this. And so we crank out so many papers now. We're still trying to figure out what normal is.
So I mean, my personal opinion is, is especially given how many contributors have been obviously reaching out to me just saying, hey, what, when is this going out? And then also I noticed that I saw a couple of projects recently, one from the folks at Mattermost who actually are citing already the 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 Google draft. And so I think if people are starting to cite the paper, we've just sort of put it out there.
All right.
Yeah.
So within the repository, there are instructions for issuing a call for public comment about the document. So I believe they're under governance or paper resources. Apologies. It's been a while.
Paper process. I just like, yeah.
There we go. All right.
I'm there like the steps to add it to the wrap up.
Yep. So let's go ahead and get that process kicked off for the public comments. And then if you, there should be a template in there for you to follow. Once you have that template ready to go and you send it to our mailing list, we should be able to coordinate the Twitter posting about it as well and get the approvals to have that sent out to the mailing list. So this is really exciting. I'm happy that that we finally got into this point where we can start sharing it and asking for more feedback on it. And let me know if you have any questions, concerns, issues with any part of that. Okay. Next up is serverless. Is anybody here for the serverless paper? Okay, what I know about it. Oh, Alak, are you here?
Yeah. So for the serverless white paper, the initial team has completed the first round of the draft. And there were some sections in which more contents need to be added. So before the holidays, in the last meeting, we had called out to folks who can help us contribute more on the paper so that we can add contents to the remaining sections.
Awesome. Okay. Have you heard back from any of the folks that you reached out to?
Yeah, some folks have reached out that they will be working in the holidays as they have some spare time. So tomorrow we are having the weekly call, so we can see what's the progress.
Okay, awesome. And then security pals, is anyone here from that? No updates. Okay, I dropped a message in the channel to try to get an update on where we're at with that one. Security reviews. As things stand right now, it looks like Cloud Custodian is still undergoing review, but that might be very out of date. Does anybody have a status update on Cloud Custodian? Jorge, you are muted.
Sorry about that. Sorry, I wasn't expecting to go that early. I'm trying to figure out what the status is. I have everything PR'd, but I haven't had contact from the two security folks since before the break. So the the PRs are kind of sitting there. And as far as I know, they're complete. I'm not sure what my next step should be.
So the Cloud Custodian joint review looks like there were changes that were requested against it.
Let me check.
That's PR 786.
Thank you.
And it might be that it's waiting on. Yeah, looks like I requested changes. Maybe it's my fault. If it is, I apologize.
Oh, it's okay. My, my, there's, I probably missed it.
It looks like there was a question about whether or not it should be, the self-assessment should be integrated into the PR. It's up to you if you want to do it as a separate one or if you want to integrate it in this.
Ah, yes. So what I did is I have a separate PR with the self-assessment.
Okay.
And the last time I talked to both of them, we weren't sure if they were gonna merge that. Or if I should just grab it all and merge it because I didn't want to step on their toes either.
Okay, so that sounds like it needs to still be resolved with Matt and Robert, correct?
Yeah, I haven't been able to contact them.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna take a note to reach out to them and find out where where things are at. And I believe I talked to Matt later today.
Okay. And if they want me to just clean it up and do a brand new PR with all of that, I can do that also.
Okay, I'll make sure at least one of them or me will reach out to you about it.
Awesome.
Okay. And then next up for the security reviews, it looks like we have two in the queue. Argo is coming up and Captain. So keep an eye out for those ones. I think Argo is next up on the list. All right. Next.
Hi, Emily. This is, this is Robert. Sorry, I'm just trying to figure out how to unmute on phone. So I just kept hitting star everything. So Jorge, you have view the PR. I know that we submitted it several months ago and then had looked at the response before Christmas. So I'm happy to sync up with you and review any final tweaks that need to be made and we get that hopefully merged in this week.
You got a thumbs up from Jorge, so I'll let you two coordinate offline.
Sorry, I didn't see you're on the phone. Nonverbal, yes.
Perfect.
All right, anyone from the security controls working group?
Yep, this is John. Yeah, we don't have much of a substantial update. We discussed a bit at the 12:08 meeting. We are still looking to wrap up what we have in progress and get some feedback on it soon and are also still interested in getting more contributors to the project. But yeah, with the holidays, you know, things have been a little bit delayed. And I also think I may now have COVID, so that'll probably contribute to things.
Oh, no.
We'll see. Yeah, hopefully something later this month or early next month, we can start getting some deliverables popping out of there.
Awesome.
Emily, the security controls work, we had discussed that we could get some additional integration with ESA. So I'll talk to John offline on that. And then later this month, when we have that conversation, ESA, we can expand the audience.
Yep, awesome. Thanks for the reminder.
One quick question. So one of the things, so I'm also the co-chair of the Financial Services User Group. And a bunch of members of that have expressed interest in getting a demo from the controls working, you know, controls working group, just to sort of better understand what you guys are, what you folks are doing. And if there's, you know, any way that, you know, the the financial services and users can help contribute and so on.
Yeah, Michael, it'll be good to expand the audience after the first version is tied up. John, John and team are working on getting that finalized. But then does we change the vision in the middle, right? I mean, need to expand it for them a little bit further for it to be actually more useful for financial organizations and other entities. So it'll be good to get their input definitely on what they're looking for and what additional things we can include in that.
It's a lot of work there. That's fantastic. Cloud native security map. Anyone here for that one? All right, how about the Cloud Native Security White Paper?
Yes, I'm here. I can give a quick update. Can everyone hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Cool. So since we last met, what we decided was let's create one separate GitHub issue for each of the deliverables. And that exists today. Over the holiday break, this is the parent issue I just had it on Zoom 747. People started adding a comment on each of those issues with saying, I want to take ownership of this. I know a few folks in the call have taken some ownership there. There are still some open months that need an owner to actually do the work and write the stuff that's in scope for that particular issue. So anything that you see in the GitHub issue I pasted with says need owner and doesn't have any comment saying, I want to take this. And if you like that, please add a comment. So we know that you are interested in working on this. I'm also hoping to start a recurring meeting for all of us who are interested in contributing. Maybe next week before this meeting. So watch out for that calendar invite. I'll try to find a way with the chairs on how to send that out to everyone involved. And yeah, if you have any more questions, reach out to me here or reach out to me on Slack.
Fantastic. Okay, so over the past couple of months, we've had a few new issues that have come in. The code shares have met with the Cloud Security Alliance because there's some overlap and some opportunities there for us to collaborate a little bit more closely. So you'll be hearing more about that later over the next several meetings that we're going to be having. Part of those discussions resulted in a new issue in the repository for a global vulnerability security summit or something along those lines. It's been interesting. So if you are interested in learning more about that, check out the issue in the repo. I don't have the number offhand. I apologize. We're still in the very early stages trying to get logistics around planning and expected content scope and all of that. So if you are interested either in attending or in volunteering for that, go ahead and comment on the issue. It looks like it's issue 835. Does anybody have any new topics, things that they want to discuss that are not currently on the agenda for today's meeting?
One thing that came up over the holidays is someone pointed out around the paper on applying secure defaults on how there was lack of attribution to like Sallster's and Schroeder's security eight principles. And that it wasn't clear whether these things were like dismissing those or like layering on top of those, but probably acknowledging that in some form of attribution and spelling it out would be beneficial.
Hey, Andres, there looks like probably a miss this meeting when it was discussed. But happy to understand more is if I understand correctly, are you saying there was a question on whether salsa and the cloud native it is kind of related? And if there is some overlap, is it worth adding appropriate attribution for that?
So there's a well-known publication in computer science from the 70s from Jerome Sallster and Michael Schroder. Like pretty much that the manifest of like when you're building secure systems, you must incorporate least privilege. You must do open design. You must do all these things, something we attest for like best practices batch. So like the introduction of this, it's unclear how do these map and like maybe calling out like a short like, hey, acknowledging the existence of it and putting it out as like an attribution of sorts would be like would clear any confusion.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. If I'll try to look up myself, but if you have a link, I'll try to read that as well. I first, when I heard, I was confused whether you're talking about the supply chain salsa. But it seems like it's a different thing. So I think it's worth taking a look and when I'm hoping to create a PR on our repo with the cloud native edge stuff added. So in that I'll try to add it very, very appropriate.
Pushkar, it might be beneficial, given the eight principles from Sallster and Schroder, as well as the existing body of work in the security space, to add a new section to the Cloud Native Security White Paper called Existing Work. And either call out that we are expecting readers of this to be familiar with them. And any deviations from those original existing principles and works are called out within the document. Otherwise, we assume that you're adhering to them.
Yeah, I like that idea. I'll make a note in the white paper issue as well for that.
Awesome.
And thank you, Andres, for the link.
Yeah, and you know, it may even have to be like the root of the problem would be like association with the names. Like I know because these are like eight items. It's convenient to call them like secure cloud negative eight, but it does have certain connotation in people's minds already. So calling the paper like applying secure defaults to cloud native systems might be more appropriate. And like you could have a pipeline that like these are eight guidelines.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense. Thank you for bringing this up. I was not aware of this.
Okay, any other new topics? Okay, two or three last minute things. So the STAG leadership team is gonna resume our regularly scheduled meetings. So stay tuned over the next several weeks, months to hear more about some of our top priorities for calendar year 2022. We're hoping to finally kick off that that Security Technical Advisory Group website in conjunction with the Cloud Native Security Map. So stay tuned for that. And for those of you that are not aware, CubeCon Cloud Native Con Europe is open for registration. It is going to be a hybrid event this year. And great news, Cloud Native Security Con is now going to be two days because of the overwhelming response we had for North America last year. So if you are interested in attending CubeCon Cloud Native Con, go ahead and register early. If you're interested in Cloud Native Security Con, pay attention. CFPs are gonna start opening up very soon. So keep an eye out in Slack channel and Twitter. That's everything that I have. Thank you all for joining us. We'll see you next week.
The CFPs next week. So you want to keep an eye for it.
Oh, one question I have for Security Con folks and probably many folks have the same question as well who send a CFP to CubeCon. Can I send the same CFP that I've sent in security identity policy track for CubeCon into Security Con? Or do they have to be separate CFPs on completely different topics?
Short answer is you can submit them. But if your CubeCon talk gets approved, you cannot do a repeat of it in security. But if your CubeCon talk gets approved, you cannot do a repeat of it in Security Con. We assume if you have to choose between the two, like you'd pick like the broader event.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yep. We do, we do check CFPs for like novelty. So that's, that's one consideration of like you're resubmitting a talk from before, like that's something that is very unlikely to receive a high rating. Like make it in.
Thank you. That makes sense.
And this has come in the past before, Emily. I know you have more thoughts and guidance around it, but.
So yes, you can submit the same talk to CubeCon and Cloud Native Security Con. If you are accepted at both of them, you will unfortunately have to choose one. If you have submitted a talk in the past that was not accepted and you're very, very interested in feeling very much that you should present this talk at the conference, it might be beneficial to reach out to some of your security tag members or other members of your network to find out if there are things that you can do to improve the overall quality, content and relatability of your talk. So on occasion, some of those CFPs do get passed over because they're just not up to par. So keep that in mind. And there's a lot of folks here within this group that would be more than happy to help see you succeed in presenting at one of these conferences.
Which you have successfully done in the past.
Yeah.
Having, having participated and chaired some of the tracks in CubeCon, I can also say some of the decisions there are extremely difficult where you have a limited number of slots and you end up rejecting 90% of the talks there and end up having to make some very difficult decisions. So it doesn't always mean that your talk was bad or, or even unrelatable. It could just literally be they had to draw a line somewhere and you came slightly under that line. So don't feel bad if you're rejected about it, but do ask for help if you're, if you're uncomfortable with where you're currently at and want to maximize your chance.
And you can always ask for feedback from the program committee if you were rejected. So they, they take notes and they're happy to share those notes with you to help improve your overall talk.
Definitely recommend on that. I've given feedback and received feedback on proposals in CubeCon. And at least if I'm reviewing it, I have very copyist notes on why this is good talk, why this, what improvements can be made. So if you have have a talk that you thought was really good, but couldn't make it, ask for feedback and there will be multiple people who have looked at it in the program committee who will have very good feedback, which might lead to a future talk getting accepted for you.
Any other last thoughts before I let everyone go? Alright, go ahead.
I do have one short thing. So I attended the SPOM event last, last year, which was after the last meeting we had here. I did a bunch of write-ups. I put a link in the document in the section, in the attendee section. So if you're interested in what happened in those events, definitely, definitely take a look at what I wrote up there. And I also strongly recommend people read up about VEX, V E X. So that link also includes a write-up on what VEX is as well. And it's something that we'll hear a lot more about in time. I don't want to go too much into it right now, but but it's, it's something that will be good to get awareness out over, over time.
Excellent. And if you haven't had a chance to read those, please do. Frederick did a great job with the write-ups. Alright, I'm gonna let everybody go. You got 29 minutes back in your day. We will see you next week. Have a great weekend.
Emily, thank you all. Have a good day.
Thank you. Bye.